Articles that have not otherwise had a public hearing and the only one that has had a public hearing is the the only one that has had a public hearing is the
Recording in progress.
On the A D U by law. So just kind of run of the show for this evening, I will go through a PowerPoint presentation. I'll bring up on each slide will have the article. And the motion will just talk through very briefly what each of the motions is. And then I will open it up for questions from members of the audience here. This is a hearing. This is not meant to be a debate on the merits of the article. So it's really just question, answer. If you have questions, we will endeavor to answer the questions that you have. And if not, we'll take note of those and have them available. Should the questions be raised at on the floor of town meeting? I'm joined this evening by Rich Muti, who is the Chair of the Select Board and Patty Mahalich, who is are going to help us run the run the Zoom. So this is a webinar. If you are interested in speaking, you just need to raise your hand and then Patty will bring you into the meeting and you can also use the Q and A feature. At the bottom of the screen here that we can use to answer questions and I will answer them verbally. I will not type answers into the Q and A. So with that, if there's unless there's any other questions before we get started, I did want to mention that for several of these articles. There are proponents here who I will just let give a brief statement. And then if you have questions on those articles, you can direct them to the proponents and we'll bring those people in to the main session of the Zoom here when we get to those articles. So with that, I will share my street screen and we can go ahead and get started. Okay. So as I said, this is the town manager's hearing for the on the articles for the fall town meeting. Time meeting starts on Thursday, November 10th at 7:00 PM in Winchester High School. Article one is a majority vote. This is a standard article we have each year that has allows reports of town officers, boards, committees, including the finance committee to be received and filed. And the proponent of this is the select board. I'm going to assume for the articles that are standard that folks won't have questions, this being one of them, but please. If you do have questions, you want to jump in at any time, please just raise your hand or throw a question in the Q and A. Thank you. Okay, Article two, Article two is a majority vote. This article is on the consent agenda and is being is being definitely postponed. This is a standard article that we have each year, which talks about the need to declare vacancies in the seats of town meeting members for failure to attend one and a half hat, one half or more of the total number of sessions in Winchester Town Meeting held in the previous 12 month period. I just wanted to mention there was a typo in the motion book. And it was correct in the in the warrant that was mailed out, but there was a typo in the motion book that referenced the wrong all meeting, fall and spring meeting, town meeting dates. So as you can see here, the dates we're talking about our fall 2021 and spring 2022. Article three is a majority vote, and this is a standard vote, standard article we have each year for the town to hear and act on the report of the planning board. And this the proponent of this is the planning. Article four. Four is a majority vote. This article is co-sponsored by the planning board, the select board, the Affordable Housing Trust and Housing Partnership Board. This is an article to amend the zoning section 3.2.2 and section 10 of the town zoning by law to allow the creation of accessory dwelling units. As I mentioned, this article was subject to a prior town meeting, excuse me, town hearing, public hearing with the planning board on October 11th. So as such, we would not be discussing it in detail this evening. But if you do have questions, you can refer them to the town clerk or to our town planner, Brian Zekely, or to me through the town manager's office at town manager dot at Winchester.us. I see Pamela Court has her hand raised. I don't know, Patty, if you want to bring her in. Can you speak, Pamela? I'm not sure. Can't see with sharing the screen. I lose a little bit of accessibility in terms of seeing what everybody else is doing.
I don't think she's in yet.
Okay. Patty, can you bring Pamela in? Okay, not sure what's going on here. Maybe Pamela, if you want to put your question in the Q and A and we can come back to this. Oh, there you are.
Hi, I was in the process. I was in the middle of typing my question.
Oh, no worries.
Is the recording for that October 11th public hearing by the planning board readily available now?
Um, I don't have the answer to that question, but I can certainly get the answer to that.
And I'm curious if there could be links to these public hearings that pertain to town meeting, if links to those recordings could be included on the town meeting. The official towns town meeting website. I don't know that that may be a big ask if y'all are very busy, but
Yeah, I can certainly look at that. Typically, I believe the planning board meetings are available on the WinCam website, but I can certainly look about adding a link there.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Just making a note here so I don't forget. Okay. The next article, Article five, this again is a it's another citizen's petition brought forward by Richard Rohan. And under this article, the town would accept sections 327 inclusive of chapter 44B of the general laws, otherwise known as the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act. By approving a surcharge on real property for the purposes of permitted for the purposes permitted by said act, including the acquisition, creation and preservation of open space, acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation and restoration of historic resources. The acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation and restored restoration of land for recreational uses. Acquisition, creation, preservation and support of community housing. And the rehabilitation of and restoration of such open space and committee housing that is acquired or created as provided under said act. In this case, we, the request is to levy a surcharge on real property of 1.5% of the annual real estate tax against real property commencing in fiscal year 2024. And then there's a series of exemptions that are proposed for acceptance. Given that this is a citizen petition, I would like to invite the proponent of this, Richard Rohan, to join as a as a panelist and Rich, Richard, you're welcome to make a brief statement and then I'll open the floor for questions. Sounds like Patty's having a little technical difficulty here, so. I'm trying to communicate with her to bring people into the meeting. Go ahead, Richard.
Thank you, Beth. So basically, this article is asking town meeting to place before the voters in the next municipal election in March of 2023. Asking the voters whether or not to adopt the so-called Community Preservation Act. And we'd be asking for in the motion language, in the position of a 1.5% surcharge on real property. Real estate taxes. And that those that surcharge would be subject to a couple of different exemptions, one of which is the exemption of the first $100,000 of assessed value on all properties, commercial, residential and industrial. And also the an exemption for low income houses, households, so households that are headed by individuals making less than 80% of the annual, I'm sorry, of the area median income could file for an exemption, the total exemption from the surcharge as well as senior household 62 years or older earning up to 100% of AMI. There's further background, you're muted, Beth.
Thank, yes, thanks. Did you have anything further that you wanted to add?
No, just that there's extensive background information in the warrant booklet that came out today, so.
Great.
See if there's any other questions in the audience time.
Yeah, please, if you have any questions, you can raise your hand or you can put your question in the chat. Or the Q and A, sorry. I don't see, I don't see anything coming up. I'll just give it another minute. Go ahead, Pamela. I think you're still in the meeting, so you can go ahead and talk. Just unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Rich, I was wondering if if we could find out how much estimated money based on the most recent state matching percentages, how much it would be estimated we would get in state matching funds if we had adopted the Community Preservation Act on perhaps this booklet of warrant articles and all of the projects involved in here, because I understand that affordable housing and fields and a number of other things would be covered by that. I'd be curious how much money Winchester would be getting from the state. If there's any way that you could provide that data so that we could see it at town meeting, that would be excellent. Thanks.
Yeah, actually, I can, and I have it. I have it here on my computer, but I can tell you the Community Preservation Coalition has worked through those numbers for the town. And their estimates are that at a 1.5, one and a half percent surcharge with all of the exemptions that I stated, that the the amount last year would have been somewhere in the range of one, one and a half million dollars. And then in November, the state distributes the matching funds. So they're getting, the state is getting ready to distribute the matching funds for the previous fiscal year. We've been told that those matching funds would be about 35% for for last year, so. Thirty, 35% of 1.5 million is another half a million dollars. So again, the Community Preservation Coalition's estimates are that the had this been in effect for the last year in in Winchester, that it would be about $2 million.
Great, thank you. Any follow-up question, Pamela?
No, thank you very much.
You're welcome. So there's a couple of questions in the Q and A that I'll run through. First is from Chris Nixon. The question is, has the select board taken a position on this? And the board has not yet taken a position, although I expect this to be one of the items they discuss at their meeting on Monday, November 7. And the next question is from Quinn Simpson. What is the 1.5% of assessed value, 1.5% in increasing current property tax rate, et cetera?
So for the, for the average Winchester household, it would be about $218. So 1.5% surcharge on a property of about of estimated assessed value of about 1.2 million is works out to be about $218 a year. If that's.
Great, thank you. Patty, if you could bring Chris Nixon in, I see he has his hand raised.
Thank you, Patty. Hi, Beth. Thanks for your presentation, Rich. I'm curious to know, just as a follow-up to some of the other presentations you've had over the past couple of weeks, have you yet been able to determine from your sources? Could the funds that are required to be either expended or encumbered each year, there are, you know, they go to certain classifications of projects. Which you've previously described, including affordable housing, open space and so forth. Have you been able to determine yet if funds could be basically transferred to capital and be encumbered so that they could only be spent on certain eligible projects that meet the criteria of the CPA? Or is that maybe sort of a work in progress and you feel like you'll have that before town meeting?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Chris. I know that was a question that you had when we met previously with the Fields Management Committee. And we've not determined the exact answer to that, although my guess is that it may not be possible, unfortunately, to do that, to encumber those those funds for the purposes of capital. They can, however, be transferred to the Affordable Housing Trust. Because their purposes are pretty much aligned with the purposes of the CPA. Similarly, the Conservation Commission, even so chooses, could set up a similar type of fund to the Affordable Housing Trust in which they could receive money from CPA, but we've not seen anything in our research that says that, I mean, where the town or the city has done that for capital or even for historical properties.
And and so I appreciate that. Is there, this may almost be more of a question for Ms. Rudolph. Is there an authority having jurisdiction on this that, you know, we could reach out to as we try to contemplate if if town meeting supported this? And we move forward, trying to understand how those funds are dispersed, how they're encumbered, how this actually plays out for Winchester, given we have a capital planning committee, many, many other communities don't. Is there some authority having jurisdiction we could reach out to and ask the question?
Um, so there is this capital planning, name is escaping me. It's like a quasi coalition. Thank you. Yes. That is a resource on questions related to the capital, excuse me, related to the CPA. So I think we could direct a question to them.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any further questions on the CPA? Okay, thank you very much, Richard.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, Beth.
You're welcome. I will move on to Article six. Article six is a majority vote. This is another citizen's petition brought forward by Rachel Whitehouse. This article would seeks to add a new section, chapter 25, to the town's code of bylaws regarding leaf blowers. The purpose of the bylaw is to establish reasonable limitations on the use of gas leaf blowers in the town in order to lessen the impact of gas leaf blowers adverse effects on health, welfare and the environment. The limitations are outlined in section four, which encourages the use of electric leaf blowers, allows that use year round and then limits the use of gas leaf blowers. And Rachel, I'll let you, similar to Rich, make a statement if you'd like regarding this, regarding the proposed bylaw.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Can, yes.
Oh, hello. Hi, thank you, Beth, and thank you, Rich, for having us tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to say a few things here. So this, in this bylaw, we're really representing dozens and dozens of residents who have expressed their frustration with the noise of gas leaf blowers, which also are emit highly toxic fumes. And at some point, everybody has to acknowledge that this is hurting our residents, children and workers. And that there's a quiet and clean alternative in electric leaf blowers and that many metro Boston towns are moving in this direction, including many of Winchester's closest neighbors. So we've, this bylaw, we believe, is a balanced approach. It's simple. It's designed specifically for Winchester to provide a quieter and cleaner town for our residents and our children, and it's fair and respectful to our landscapers.
Thank you, Richard. So I will open, sorry, Rachel. I'll open the floor to any town meeting members who may have questions or your question, thank you and I. Go ahead, Pamela.
Hi, thank you. I apologize for this being nitpicky, but I was just curious where within the language where you're defining leaf blowers and electric versus gas powered. It would something like a leaf vacuum ball, which is more like it's like a lawnmower, but it sucks the leaves and the branches up and they're usually gas powered. That's is that something that you're just not worried about because it's not used enough or something that would fall within there?
So this, this bylaw only addresses leaf blowers. So if it's not blowing leaves, if it's, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't be impacted. There's lots of other landscaping equipment that uses gas and this bylaw does not address them.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Pam.
Any further question on this article? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Article seven. Article seven is a standard article to vote and hear upon the act, the report of the Capital Planning Committee. The report of the article is the Capital Planning Committee. Article eight, so Article eight is the motions brought forward by the Capital Planning Committee. There are 12 motions under Article eight. So I'm gonna, I have two pages of, actually, excuse me, three pages of motions listed here. So I, what I'm gonna do is is go through motions one through five that are on this first screen here and see if people have questions. And then I'll move to the second one, second page and so forth.
What I like is that you didn't ask too many questions.
Whoever is speaking, could you please mute?
That forced us to tip our hands on answers.
Can whoever is speaking, mute yourself.
George, can you mute yourself? Patty, maybe push them out? Thanks.
Sorry, Patty is having some technical difficulties, so I'm texting her to let her know who to bring in. She's not able to hear or see the meeting up its time, so we're we're making it work here. So Roger McPeak is here. He's the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee. We can he'll come in in just a minute if there's any questions on any of these articles as well. So I'll just move through the I'll read through the first five motions here and and then we can open the floor of questions. So motion one is for the town to appropriate $150,000 from the building stabilization fund for the schematic package for roof design and replacement engineering. The, in particular, this project is looking at the Ambrose roof, the McCall, a portion of the McCall school roof, town hall and library roofs, which are both slate roofs. Motion two is for the town to appropriate $500,000 from the building stabilization funds for the town hall fire alarm project, including construction and engineering. Motion three is for the town to appropriate $825,000 from the building stabilization funds for mason repairs to the McCall school building, including construction and engineering. Motion four is for the town to appropriate $186,000 from the building stabilization funds for the McCall school control conversion completion, including construction and engineering. And motion five is for the town to appropriate $118,170 from the capital stabilization fund for the purchase of a new sidewalk file for DPW. So with that, I'll open the floor to any questions that folks have on those first five motions. Pamela, I'm not sure if you have your hand raised for for this article or
Sorry, I forgot to lower it. My apologies.
Okay. Okay, seeing no questions, I'll move on to the next group. So this is motions six through 10. The first motion six is for the town to appropriate $140,000 from the capital stabilization fund for repairs to the Cross Street Bridge, including construction and engineering. Motion seven is for the town to appropriate $250,000 from the capital stabilization funds for repairs to the Washington Street Bridge, including construction engineering. Motion eight is for the town to appropriate $70,000 from the capital stabilization fund for repairs to the Ambrose School Fire Sprinkler System, including construction and engineering. Motion nine is for the town to appropriate $250,000 from the capital stabilization fund for installation of median islands along Highland Avenue, including engineering and construction. This is related to a traffic calming project. And motion 10 is for the town to appropriate $150,000 from the capital stabilization funds for the installation of a rapid rectangular flashing beacon and curb extensions at Leonard Fields. And this is for construction and engineering. And for those who may not know what the acronym RRF is, it's the flashing lights that you see around town that we've installed at a variety of crosswalks, which are pedestrian activated. So folks push the button, the lights come on and flash as people are crossing through the crosswalk. So with that, I'll take any questions on motions six through 10? Go ahead, Pamela.
Would it be possible to get a list of any kind of recordings or minutes of meetings where the medians for Highland Avenue were discussed? Whether that's, whether that's T-TAC or Select Board or Planning Board or just, I know that those are available and maybe I can work with Mary Ellen on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, sorry, the only thing I would say there is correct me around about the product's been going on for four, four years at this point. So Pamela, do you want all four years worth or just this year?
Just, I'm, I'm sorry, Rich. Thanks for clarifying. Yes, just this year. Just this year.
Sure. The Select Board had a public hearing in the end of June. So those minutes are certainly available. And then the T-TAC has discussed it on two or three occasions over the past few months. So I'm not sure if they're up to date with their minutes, but I can certainly check with those.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any other questions on motions six through 10? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to the last two motions under Article eight. Motion 11 is for the town to appropriate $220,000 from the water and sewer retained earnings for Nelson Street slash Winchester High School drainage improvements, including engineering and construction. And motion 12 is for the town to appropriate $60,000 from the water and sewer retained earnings for winter ponds, water quality improvements, including construction and engineering. Happy to take any questions on those two projects? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article nine. Article nine is another article that's brought forward by the Capital Planning Committee. And Article nine is to vote that the town moved in second, that the town moved in second, that the vote of the town passed under Article 13 at the 2019 Fall Town Meeting be amended to increase the amount of the appropriation and borrowing authorization for the Lake Street Bridge Replacement Project from 100, excuse me, 1.5 million to 1.2 million. And this is again, just increasing the borrowing authorization for that project. Any questions on this article? Okay. Seeing none. Move on to Article 10. Article 10 is the final article that's brought forward by the Capital Planning Committee. This is a two thirds vote. And this article is to appropriate 600,000 Appropriate, uh, six hundred thousand, five hundred dollars to pay the cost of purchasing a vector truck for the water and sewer department. Uh, this is a truck commonly used by, uh. The town that we often have to, or we always have to, uh. Either, um, borrow from another community or pay to, um, have a contractor come in, uh, when we need to use the vehicle. So this, uh, it would be purchasing our own factor truck. Any questions on this article? Okay. Seeing done, we will move on to article eleven. Article eleven, um, is brought forward by the town's communications study committee. Um, this article, uh, is recommending that the select board and town manager prepare an initial town communication plan. Uh, and the plan should very briefly describe the purpose and goals, audiences, information, interests and communication channels. Task, rules and responsibilities, schedule, budget and evaluation matrix. Uh, this, uh, as I mentioned, this article is brought forward by the communications study committee, which was a, um, a committee created by town meeting. Uh, last fall, who've been working over the past year. Uh, and Lance Burnsback is here on behalf of the communications study committee. Lance, you're welcome to make a few comments if you'd like.
Uh, good evening, thank you, Beth. Uh, this article is intended to, as a bridge. Between the recommendations of the study committee and implementation of these recommendations. Uh, the study committee's charge was to look at the issues and, uh, set policy and program direction. Uh, but it's not our charge to actually implement that. Uh, and we know that there are some of these, some of the recommendations will be straightforward implement, others will require some time and effort. So this is an opportunity to basically, uh, get a sense of the town committee, uh, town meeting as to how important they think these actions are. But also to give the select board, the town manager an opportunity to look into the feasibility of implementing these. Uh, we would expect that, uh, the, the town, select board and town manager might come back to town meeting and say. Of, you know, ten of these, ten of these recommendations are fairly easy to do and others are more difficult. We'll need other more time or funding. Or other actions. So this is basically a bridge, uh, between the recommendations and opportunity to explore their feasibility.
Great, thank you Lance. Um, I'll open the floor to any questions that folks may have. Okay, not seeing any. We will move on to article twelve. Um, article twelve is a, uh, motion move brought forward by the EFPBC and the school committee. Um, article twelve would, um, amend the vote of town meeting, of town passed under article nine at the twenty twenty. Spring, springtime meeting, um, to expand the scope of the purposes of the appropriation and borrowing authorization. To include paying costs of planning and designing of a new lynch school project. In addition to paying costs of feasibility study and to delete language regarding the allocation of premium received upon the sale of bond notes or other. That is no longer necessary or consistent with state law, such that said amendment, um, and there's language here. Um, to show what the revised languages. So article, article twelve is, um, basically, this was a. Borrowing authorization previously approved by town meeting for the feasibility study for the Lynch School. Um, the feasibility study, um. Wrapped up earlier this year, and so there's, um, approximately five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars that remains in that. And so this, um, this vote will allow. The EFPBC and school committee to move forward with that, um, remaining funds immediately to continue, uh, with the design of the. Uh, Lynch School Project. Um, so I'm gonna, article twelve and article thirteen are both brought forward by the EFPBC and school committee. I'll just mention both of those and then I'll turn it over to Chris Nixon. Um, from the school committee, if he wants to make any comments on both of these articles, and then we'll take comments on both at one time. So article thirteen is, um, the article associated with the, um. Payment or the appropriation for the Lynch School renovation project, uh, authorizing nine ninety-four million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand. Nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. Uh, this would be subject to, um, a debt exclusion override, which will be held on. Um, January seventh of twenty twenty-three. Um, and Chris, I'll hand it over to you to, to give the details of, of that and add anything you'd like to add to article twelve.
Um, sure, and, and as I start talking here, if you wouldn't mind, if you could elevate Jay Nardone, I think he's in the audience as well.
Sure, yep.
Given what questions may come. Um, so first of all, let me put in a plug. Um, Beth, if you, um, are you able to bring up the Lynch website? Am I able to do that sort of as a graphic for people?
Um, I should be able to. Let me just stop my share here. I'll open that up.
If you go to Lynchtwentytwentyfive.com, which I encourage all town meeting members to do. You can learn a lot about kind of where we are in this process. We, the feasibility study that Beth just mentioned. Which is pertinent to article twelve, uh, we actually submitted all the documents to the MSBA at the end of August. They spent about a little over, well, a few weeks really reviewing that submittal. And we're thrilled to share that, um, just last week on October twenty-sixth, the executive board at the MSBA voted unanimously. To approve our project scope and budget agreement, uh, which basically is a, a partnership with us. Um, to move forward on the Lynch project. The, uh, feasibility study is an early conceptual stage of the project. Um, as Beth mentioned, in the spring of twenty, town meeting approved one point five million dollars for feasibility. That was a very conservative number on our part. Uh, we spent well short of that. So those dollars are still technically available and the MSBA is aware of and they are approving of us seeking permission from town meeting. To basically take those dollars and keep the project moving. If article twelve passes, that five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars that's available, this, um. Will not increase the project cost by that amount. It simply allows us to use the money that's sitting there now to keep the project going. Uh, into the early stages of design development and for our project team to continue to have conversations with. The various authorities having jurisdiction on the project. If article twelve, twelve should fail, then it means our hands are sort of tied. Um, presuming article thirteen passes and then we have to wait for the debt exclusion to pass in January. That's really what happened with the Vincent Owen back in twenty-ten, when we completed the feasibility study. Um, everybody kind of sat on their hands for a while until the, until town meeting acted and the debt exclusion passed in January. So it just means really nothing's happening. Um, and we certainly would like to keep the design work moving. It's one of the few things we can control on this project is, um, is scheduled. Um, so that's really, I guess, the quick summary, um, of article twelve. But article thirteen and Beth, if, if you don't mind, if you could go to the cost page that you see there on the pull down. Um. Go up to home and you should find a pull down for cost. There is a cost page that I think a lot of town.
Hidden under my, my pictures, my, my zoom screen on the side, yeah.
You got it. No, you got it. So, um, I think this is an important page for town media members to become familiar with. Um, so the, the language that you see in article thirteen that references a ninety-four and a half million dollar project. That language is specifically required by the MSBA. That references what we call our overall project budget. You see that down there sort of on the right. That's the construction cost for the new building, which we estimate is a little over sixty-five million. But of course, we have to abate the existing Lynch, take it down. That's worth two point three. We're putting half a million dollars of improvements into Parkhurst. We're gonna spend about five million dollars on some temporary swing space at Parkhurst and we have, um, millions in owners and. Construction contingencies, design management fees and so forth. So this all contributes to a considerably higher project budget. However, um, and it's not really explicitly mentioned in article thirteen, because for some reason the MSBA doesn't like us to do it. Um, that project scope and budget agreement that was just voted on October twenty-sixth includes a, um, MSBA reimbursement. Of around seventeen and a half million dollars. We received about a ten million dollar facilities grant from the MSBA on the Vincent Owen project. We received about forty-four million dollars on Winchester High School. And we're expecting to receive over seventeen million on the Lynch project. So the way that actually works is once the project starts, we begin submitting invoices to the MSBA. And within a couple of weeks, they process them and they start sending us a, a share of that, a reimbursement, a partial reimbursement, if you will. And so the consequence is we never wind up borrowing the full project budget. We'll borrow far less. Because by the end of the job, we will have received over seventeen million dollars from the MSBA. So I guess two important points, Beth, to make is. I mean, if you, if you literally scroll down, I think further on the page, there is a section there about, you know, what is the cost to, to taxpayers? So, um, the select board, um, and management have done some modeling. Um, the modeling you see here is based on a, a thirty-year, uh, bond, um, at, uh, what would be our net, our net cost. If we spent every nickel on the project. Um, uh, there's still some decisions to be made on the part of the select board around, you know, bonding term and whether they want to borrow everything at, at once. Or do they want to borrow in tranches? And so a little bit of variability here. But it's important for town meeting members to understand that, you know, this cost model, um, is based on us actually having to permanently bond. Our net cost, which is gonna be around seventy-seven million dollars and that's only if we spend every dollar on the project. And we hope, of course, to spend far less than that. So it can be a little confusing when you see the language on the warrant that references ninety-four and a half. But that's the way the MSBA always makes us do it. Uh, we have to seek permission to borrow the full amount, even though they turn around and. Give us a bunch of money, so we don't actually have to. Um, so hopefully that's, uh, that's clear. This is a very standard article. Um, town meeting saw something very similar for Winchester High School and, as well as for the Vincent Owen project, uh, back in twenty-ten.
Great, thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. Uh, we'll open the floor to any questions from folks at this point. On either article twelve or article thirteen. Okay, looks like we don't see anybody raising their hand, so. I will jump back into the presentation. And we will move forward to article fourteen. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Jay, for your time this evening.
Beth, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, um, so article fourteen, this is, uh, the first of several articles brought forward by the select board. Um, this article requires a two-thirds vote, um, and is a follow-up to, uh, discussions that have happened over the past several. Um, town meetings, including last fall where the town was given authorization to take the property at the corner of Washington Street. Washington Swan Street by eminent domain. Uh, the town did take that property last December and we did issue an RFP for redevelopment of that property earlier this year. Um, and so we, the select board has, uh, voted to move forward with, to enter into a land disposition agreement with, um, Melanson Development Group. So this article fourteen would authorize the select board to sell, uh, the property, the, um, piece of land at the corner of Washington Swan Street. Um, and would authorize the select board to enter into a land disposition, disposition agreement for such sale. Said agreement being substantially in the form, um, available on the town's website prior to town meeting. So if you go under the town. Um, and onto the town's website, under town meeting, under Fall Town Meeting, there is a, um, an exhibit to, uh. Um, letter that was sent out, the email, um, last week and is also included in the packet that you'll be getting. Uh, delivered to your home with a motion book that includes, uh, that, um, LDA that the select board has, um, has previously voted on. Um, so I'm happy to take any questions on this article. Folks have them. I'm not seeing any there. We will move forward to article fifteen. Oh, I see one question came up in the Q and A here. Um, this is from Heather. Oh, thank you, Heather. Um, so Heather Van Mering, our time meeting moderator, I just wanted to mention. Uh, thank you, Heather, for reminding me that article fourteen and article fifteen will be taken out of order. Um, and it will, it will be here, heard, um, on the second night of town meeting. I believe it'll be the first order of business on the second night of town meeting. Um, due to some, um, prior commitments of select board numbers. Okay, article fifteen. Um, article fifteen is again brought forward by the, um, select board and requires a majority vote. Under this article, the town would vote to increase the FY twenty-three principal unfunded debt budget. Um, appropriated the spring twenty-two time meeting by one point two-two million dollars. Uh, which would be funded by reducing the FY twenty-three health insurance budget by the same amount. Um, this article is brought forward because the town is unable to use our ARPA funds directly to pay the debt service for the Washington Swan Street property. Um, the town, the difference between the purchase price, uh, from Melanson and, which is four point zero five million dollars. And what the town paid for the property, which is five point two-seven million dollars, is the one point two-two number. Um, and the town is looking, uh, to make up that difference. Um, so. Under this article, we would be appropriating money or moving money into the principal unfunded debt budget and when the, the, um. The town has issued a ban for that full five point two-two million dollars in March of twenty-two. That is a twelve-month ban that will be come due in March of twenty-three and we will pay down that amount by one point two-two million dollars. In, um, March of twenty twenty-three, when that ban comes due and then we will reissue a new ban for that lower amount of four point zero. Five million dollars. And then the, the select board would, um, vote to use one point two-two million dollars from. The ARPA funds to pay the, um, FY twenty-three health insurance premiums. Uh, with that, I'm happy to open it up to any questions that folks may have on this article. Okay. Moving forward to article sixteen. Article sixteen authorizes a select board to amend the terms of a certain, of a certain lease, uh, by and between the town and the trustees of the Winchester Museum Trust. For the lease of certain property located on Shore Road, on which the Griffin Museum of Photography is located, uh, said amendment would. Uh, allow the use of certain funds and get certain endowed funds for improvement to said museum. Um, so this is the, um, the lease that the town has with the Griffin Museum. When the town entered into the ground lease in the, uh, early nineteen nineties, um, the museum was required to have an endowment fund of not less than two thousand, two thousand. Two hundred thousand dollars. Um, under this article, it would authorize, time meeting would authorize a select board to amend the, the terms of that lease. Um, to allow them to use those endowed funds for improvements to the museum. I'm happy to take any questions on this article. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to article seventeen. Article seventeen is a consent agenda item. Um, and this would, um, under this article, the town would appropriate five point five thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty cents. From the Transportation Network Receipts Fund to partially fund the, uh, RFB curb extension project at Leonard Field. Uh, this is a standard article we have every year. Um, there's, this money comes to the town, um. From the Transportation Network Company Division of the Department, um, Utilities. Um, the assessment is based on the number of rides from previous calendar year that originated in the, um, cities and towns across the state at twenty cents per ride. So this is money that the town gets from ride sharing, um, programs and then we are able to appropriate it for a variety of uses, which. Uh, in this case, we're, uh, putting it towards the, uh, RFB project that is, um, proposed to be funded under article eight, uh, on capital planning committee. Any questions on this one? Okay, moving forward to article eighteen. Article eighteen is a majority vote. Um, again, this is a, um, motion brought forward by the select board. Uh, and under this, the town would vote to appropriate thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twelve cents to be expended in accordance with the Massachusetts. State subdivision for statewide opioid sediment funds. In order to supplement and strengthen resources available to communities and families for substance use disorder prevention, harm, reduction. Treatment and recovery and that, and to meet this appropriation. The same amount be funded by miscellaneous, non-recurring general fund revenue. Um, so this is a, a new article to the town, uh, but we will be one that you see going forward. Um, in July of twenty-twenty-one, the Massachusetts Attorney General announced, uh, the state's participation in a twenty-six billion dollar nationwide resolution. With opioid distributors. Um, and as part of that, um, there's approximately, um, five hundred and twenty-five million dollars. That will be coming into Massachusetts and of that forty percent is going directly to, um, local communities. Winchester is expected to receive a total of five hundred and forty thousand dollars, five hundred forty-three hundred eighty-four dollars, uh, over the next. Um, well, between now and, and twenty thirty-eight. And so this is the first distribution that the town has gotten. Um, the way the state regulations are currently set up, the, the funds are being deposited directly. The way the state regulations are currently set up, the the funds are being deposited directly into the general fund and require appropriation to me by town meeting so that the funds can be used by the town for the stated. Happy to take any questions? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Article 19. Article 19 is brought forward by the select board. It is consent agenda item. This is a standard article that we that you see from time to time on the town meeting warrant. And that, under this article, a town would rescind the portion of the borrowing authorization identified below that have not been used nor no longer needed in the amounts identified. So in this case, we're rescinding a borrowing authorization for $12,900. In the background of this is basically that when authorizations to borrow are approved, they are typically authorized for an estimated amount of a project, estimated amount of a project. And oftentimes those projects may come in below the estimated amount or may get a grant for those projects. So this just rescinds the amount of the borrowing that we that we had, we don't need to use. Any questions on this one? Okay, Article 20. Article 20 is moved in second that this town votes to appropriate $275,000 from free cash to the health insurance, healthcare and health insurance stabilization fund that was created at spring 2022 town meeting. So in this case, as you may recall, last spring, we did create this new stabilization fund. And the purpose of the fund was to set aside reserves to offset unseen increases in employee healthcare expenses. We are proposing to move this $275,000 from free cash into that account, which is the same amount that was remaining in the town's FY22 health insurance budget at the end of the last fiscal year. Any questions on this one? Okay, next article, Article 21. Article 21 is a consent agenda item. And under this article, the town would vote to appropriate $75,000 from free cash to supplement the Eversource account for the purposes of engineering and other consulting services regarding the location and construction of the Eversource 345 KV electronic transmission line in Winchester. This is a standard article that you've seen in a few of the past town meetings. We have a memorandum of understanding with Eversource whereby they were are reimbursing the town for field engineering services associated with the oversight of the 345 KV project installation. And in this case, it's a reimbursement, so the town has to have money upfront to to pay the consultant and we are reimbursed by Eversource. Any questions on this article? Okay, moving forward. Article 22. Under this article, the town would appropriate 1.35 million dollars to pay for the cost of constructing a water pumping station to increase water pressure and flow for the for the Arbor Lane and Wendell Street area, including the payment of costs related to the design, engineering, original equipment for pumping station, pipeline connection and all of the costs incidental and related there too. So a little bit of background on this. The town had an intermissible agreement with the city of Woburn dating back to the early 90s and prior to that was was practice, although not formalized in an intermissible agreement to supply approximately 38 houses in the Arbor Lane and Wendell Street neighborhood with water from the city of Woburn because Winchester was unable to provide adequate pressure to those houses. Last fall, with the new PFAS regulations that came into place, we were notified that the city of Woburn had an exceedance of those state issued PFAS contamination levels. And so those residents that were on Winchester water, we very quickly moved to remove them from the Winchester, from the, they're on Woburn water. We quickly moved to remove them from the Woburn system, put them on the Winchester system. And we've worked over the past few months to install a temporary pump station so that they have adequate water pressure. That temporary station has an expected life expectancy of 18 to 24 months. So this appropriation would pay for the design and construction of a final pumping station to support the adequate water supply and water pressure to those to those homes. I see one question in the chat. Article 22, is this something ARPA funds can be used for? So the select board did actually allocate approximately $230,000 towards the installation of the of ARPA funds towards the installation of the temporary station. And although this is something that the town could would be eligible for ARPA funds, the decision has been made to move forward with going to town meeting and having it being a borrowing authorization with a debt service would be paid out of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds of which a portion gets moved over to the real estate tax under Chapter 110. Any further questions on this article? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to Article 23. Article 23 is the first of the articles brought forward by the Finance Committee. Article 23 is a consent agenda item and it has five motions underneath it. So I will just read through those motions. We have the Chair of the Finance Committee here as well in case there are questions regarding this article or any of the other articles brought forward by the Finance Committee. So under Motion 1, $17,000 would be appropriated to increase the FY23 Town Clerk Personal Services Budget. Under Motion 2, $19,000 would be voted to increase the FY23 Town Clerk's expense budget. Those two items are associated with the cost for the January 7th special election. Under Motion 3, $25,000 would be voted to increase the FY23 Reserve Fund Account. So typically, as FinCom has asked for reserve fund requests by departments at fall and spring town meeting, they'll seek appropriation to be made whole of any money that they've given out from the reserve funds before that, before those times. Motion 4 is to reduce the FY22, excuse me, FY23 principal unfunded debt budget appropriated the spring town meeting by $200,000 by reducing the funding from the property tax levy in the amount of $140,000, 144, 50 and by reducing funding from the Building Stabilization Fund by $11,400 and by reducing funding from the Capital Stabilization Fund by $44,550. And then Motion 5 is to decrease the FY23 funded debt interest budget appropriated at spring town meeting by $189,046 by reducing, by decreasing funding from the property tax levy in the amount of $210,550 by increasing funding from the Building Stabilization Fund by $4,651 and by increasing the funding from the Capital Station Fund by 16,853. And motions four and five are related to the the debt budget that was approved at the spring 22 town meeting. Those, that budget included estimated payments for various projects. Motions four and five are adjustments to those based on the actual numbers. Any questions on these articles or these motions? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Article 24. Article 24 is brought forward by the Finance Committee and is a consent agenda item. Under this motion, the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, we voted that the spring 2022 town meeting would be increased by $43,943 decreasing the funding from the property tax levy levy in accordance with Chapter 110 of the Acts of 1993 by 82,624 and increasing the funding from the Water and Sewer Receipts by $126,567. The original budget approved at the spring 22 meeting was based on estimated MDR assessments and the estimated debt service payments. And these budget adjustments are based on the final actual numbers that we've received. Any questions on this article? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Article 25. Article 25 is brought forward by the Finance Committee and is a majority vote. Under this article, the town would reduce the Recreation Department receipts for FY23 by $487,480 and fund the budgetary shortfall shortfall by the same amount from retained earnings. So as you may know, the Recreation Department operates as an enterprise fund which limits the increase of year to year estimated revenue in accordance with the Department of Revenue or the DOR regulations. DR does not approve increases in enterprise fund fees above what was received in the most recent fiscal year close. And so this adjustment is to adjust the funding source by reducing the estimated revenues to a more acceptable level, which is the FY22 revenue total and increasing the use of retained earnings to fund the budget gap. Any questions on this article? Okay, Article 26. Article 26 is brought forward by the town manager. This item is consent agenda. This is a standard article we see every year, which would appropriate $249,193.8 from the PEG access and cable related funds. $212,108.8 of which would be used for PEG access service programming, monitoring and cable operators compliance with the franchise agreement to prepare for the renewal of the cable franchise license, including any associate expert legal services and $37,085 of which shall be used for capital purposes. Any questions on this article? Okay, Article 27. Article 27 is also brought forward by the town manager. And this article is proposed to be indefinitely postponed. There are no there are no prior year bills to be taken care of under this article. Article 28 is brought forward by the School Committee. Under this article, the town would vote to transfer $58,000 from free cash to the SPED Reserve Fund, which is established in spring of 2018 by town meeting in accordance with MGL Chapter 40, Section 13E. So under this article, the Massachusetts Special Education Circuit Breaker Funding Program helps the local school districts offset expenditures related to providing legally mandated special education services. In this case, there was $58,000 that was remaining at the at the end of FY22. And so the the plan here is just to transfer that remaining balance, which closed to free cash into that SPED Reserve Fund. Any questions on this article? All right, we're getting close. Article 29. There are a few, there are a few motions under this one. Article 29 is the the Personnel Board article and there are seven motions total. So I'm going to run through the first three that are on this page and see if anybody has any questions. I believe Peter Schimetz from the Personnel Board may be here, although he may have had to leave. So if he's not here, I'll do my best to try to answer any questions that folks have. So under Motion 1, Schedule 10 of the Town's Compensation Plan would be amended, revised and modified in accordance with the recommendation of the Personnel Board as set forth in Appendix A and pursuant to the MOU reached between the Select Board and the Winchester Fire Fires Association. So we, the town has settled our contract with the firefighters and so Motion 1 would basically memorialize those the those those compensation plans that were included in that in that settled contract. And then under Motion 2, the town would transfer a sum of $120,720 from the FY23 unallocated wage account, which would fund those those staffing adjusts, colas in the first year of the contract, which is FY23. Under Motion 3, that's the Schedule 11 of the Town's Compensation Schedule be amended, revised and modified in accordance with recommendations of the Personnel Board. Set forth in Appendix B, this is the Custodians Union. So similar to the Fire Union, the town has settled with the Custodians Union. And so in this case, we would be amending the town's compensation schedule to come in line with the with the settled contract amounts. Any questions on motions 1 through 3? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next. So Motion 4, similar to the firefighter union, Motion 4 is the funds, the 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 custodian salary adjustments. So this is the transfer sum of $42,121 from the FY23 unallocated wages, the FY23 personal services budget to fund the cost of those the salary adjustments. Motion 5 would amend the town's compensation schedule effective July 1 of 22, recommended by the town manager and the Personnel Board for proposed classifications for the, it would amend the Schedule 5 miscellaneous compensation, miscellaneous compensation schedule and Appendix D, the classification the PT compensation schedule. So it would be adjusting positions on those two on those two schedules. And then Motion 6, the town would make a newly created position of intern and DPW summer later laborer as well as an existing program manager, one and program instructor, two positions would be exempt from future cola raises. And under Motion 7, the town would revert the program instructor, one and program instructor, two to the June 1st, 2022 rates that would then become effective December 15th of 2022. So that would now include the cola adjustments that took effect on July 1st of 22. Those are a little confusing, so I'm happy to take any questions on those. Okay, seeing none. We are at our last article, which is Article 30. This is brought forward by this, brought forward by the Select Board. It requires a majority vote. And this article is to dissolve the Communication Studies Committee, having having completed their duties and submitted to report to this Fall Town Meeting. Any questions on that one? Okay. I think we've gotten through all the, all 30 articles. Any final questions? All right. Thank everybody for your time this evening and look forward to seeing you all in a week at the high school.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.